A couple of housekeeping items. This item took a little longer than we had expected to see here.[17.23][17.23][laughter] So I'd like to talk to staff and I'd like to suggest that we postpone items nine, discussion and action on city drinking water arsenic levels and the associated costs. Item ten, which we have time to do, discussion and consideration of appointment of council subcommittee regarding climate action 2020 planning. And item number eleven, discussion and consideration of recommendations from the planning commission regarding downtown parking modifications. There are no objections to the council numbers. I will continue these items to future agenda. Would you? What were you doing? Oh. Pass.[60.14][60.14][laughter] Any deliberation from the council is welcome. See, deliberations are emotional. It's just my job to keep it moving, you know? Well, I'll say if you think we're waiting for the rest of the council to attend. You know, I really wanted to, I really want to start by saying there was a lot of energy put into this process compared to, I know that Lynn specifically has been talking to you at the site for over two years and even working on her much longer than that. And I know that many people have put energy into this and I want to thank everybody. We were really grateful tonight and everybody really did express their, even Magic was,[136.16][136.16][laughter] was friendly and engaging. That was all part, I promise, I promise.
For me, I think that there, what I, when Magic asked the room, who wants bike paths? Everyone raised their hand. And for me, the question of whether or not we need Class One bike paths is a question. Do we class the bike paths? The question of when we put those bike paths in, Class One bike paths, of where we put those bike paths in, needs to be studied, needs to be understood. Community needs to be engaged. Consensus needs to be brought. And that takes time. And when we as a city or as a municipality jot down lines on a piece of paper and spread it around town without taking the time to build that community input, community consensus, this is the response that we get. For me, it's met quite often, we get judged as council members, as elected officials and as mayors for taking too long and for things costing too much. But time and money is what it takes to bring community together and find a path forward that the majority can accept. So for me, I'm not asking whether or not we should have Class One bike paths. I'm asking when and how we can have Class One bike paths this evening in a process that really brings our community together.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Glass.
Thank you. So I would like to concur with our mayor. I think that we hardly can get a single person to raise their hand and say they hate bike paths. They think we ought to spend more time in the automobile and contribute to greenhouse gases. Now, nobody in this town is going to say that. Maybe there are one or two, but they're certainly not going to say it publicly. So, but I am looking at this huge, you know, huge response, all these people that are here. And, and we find ourselves to some degree in a tempest, in a teapot, or a big controversy when, when, you know, the trail proponents are, many of them got up and said, well, gosh, you really love the vision and we need to get, move this thing forward and we need to do this and we need to do this. But I hear the problems, which is, that's a really great thing, that we have a community where people are hearing the problems. And, and many of the people that, that see the problems were saying, but boy, I really support, I really support the idea for Alson, I really, so, so, you know, what Magic said and some of the other people said is true, like, we have a huge amount of commie ground here. So I think our, our fundamental issue is partly process. So this whole thing kind of moved forward without a public process set and, and established and, and put together. And so I think we need to think about what our process needs to be as we go forward and take a look at how to make this viable, the concept of having, you know, supporting trails, et cetera, but not, obviously not stepping on the toes of people at Burbank Heights, not, not bisecting Burbank Farm, not making a problem for people on Ellenmore Avenue. How do we take all of these little details into account? And as is the case in so many things to do with government, the devil's in the details. Or somebody else said to me, the goddess is in the details or something. It's, it's important that we look at the details because just saying, wow, I really love bike trails, without taking a look at exactly where they're putting them and how it will implement them, whether it's feasible, whether we have the money, and whether they're safe and blah, 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 is imprudent. So I thought, one of the things I wanted to talk about was, so how do we think about that process? And I'm sure that many of us have experienced a typical planning process that has, that oftentimes doesn't turn out quite how our community wanted. So government agency goes out and hires very expensive consultant. And then the very expensive consultant puts together a bunch of ideas that may not be terribly rooted in the community. And then, then has a few, what are those called, design finess or?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you. Sure. You know, who are those French direct words, but anyway, so they do that and then everybody is faced with tiny few choices between stuff they didn't really want, that were put together by people that live in Ameriville. So that, that process just doesn't feel that great. Well, as many of you may know, in my, my day job, I run a statewide trail organization. And right now, we're, we've just gotten a grant and we're working with a community of Big Sur to try and figure out an alignment for the California Postal Trail through Big Sur, which has been a huge controversy. If you think Big Sur is controversial, here it is.
To Big Sur.
And this is an 80 mile trail, so we're talking really good controversy. But what that community has done, before moving their process forward to those expensive consultants, they've actually created a community process that's, that's facilitated, but it's a process where there's segments or areas along the trail. So they've actually divided the Big Sur into six different areas. And they have a community group within each one of those areas. And that group has, each of those groups is working on proposed alignments. And they're trying to come up with, each of the groups is coming up with three proposals or, you know, pretty much three alternatives, which is a pretty standard land use kind of thing to do is, you know, the alternative A, alternative B, and alternative C. And, and those alignments are being, actually what my organization is doing is providing the mapping support to these citizen groups. And we're making it so that all of the citizens can see the alternative maps and then have something visual to look at and then get together and, and work with each other to talk about, well, why they think these different alternatives are a good idea. So that's a process that we're working on with Big Sur. I don't know whether something like that is feasible for our community, but I'm thinking, what can, how can we create a process that's maybe a facilitated process where people can take a look at all the incredible work that Lynn and his friends and fellow conspirators have put together and then provide feedback and visual, some visual examples of different alternatives? So that if we then move forward with a feasibility process, that we're advising these very expensive consultants of what our, what our community is thinking about in terms of what might be viable for our community before we're having somebody from out of town tell us this, you know, this is the way it's going to be, or this is how it should be. So maybe that kind of process can be done with a less expensive facilitator rather than a whole consulting firm that has to get extremely expensive. And, and we can get the different stakeholders to the table. So I think Lynn's done an incredible job and groundwork of looking at where potential sites are. But he already, he heard a lot of, he and his committee heard a lot of feedback today about what is perceived as problems within the community. So then how can we, before we start putting a cast in concrete alignment together, start working collaboratively to create some alternatives that accommodate some of the objections within the community? So I'm just putting that out there and wondering how we might be able to do something like that. And, you know, I think we've seen so many times in this community where we have gone through, there was a Northeast plan and then there's the C V L system. And then there was Laguna Vista. And we could, we can talk about so many issues in this community where people have gotten upset about the outcome. But often what has happened is we go through a long process, we spend a lot of money, there's a huge amount of momentum for a certain outcome because we've already spent a lot of money on it. So how can we have a lower cost, and I'm not saying no cost, but a lower cost community input kind of activities that will get us to a point where we can turn over something more, that, that just has more data about what it is, what our alternatives are before we move forward? So that's, that's what I'm thinking. I think that we should be very, very thankful to the people who've done so much work on this project. And now we just need to move forward with a way to take the input from the public into consideration. So that's what I'm thinking.
Crossline. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I could have said it any better than you did just yet. I'm so grateful for how you expressed yourself and the key points that you've made. I also agree with the comments that the mayor made. So I want to try and kind of move my remarks a little off that, just want you to know that they're, have set the foundation for me. So what I would say about our community is that I know we really strongly support alternative transportation, almost. We are not just bicycle people, we're not just pedestrian people. We do have a renewed interest in transit. In fact, I think our candidate's forum recently, we heard a lot of concern about jetties and electrical vehicles and how can we get from here to there without being on a sidewalk bike or in a car? So I would say our community is very committed to alternative transportation. I want to say too, one of the comments this evening that I enjoyed so much was Cynthia's, I'm not sure she's here. And it was a very meaningful way, I think, of extending appreciation to Lynn Deedler. There are conversations going on now in living rooms, on the sidewalk, all over. And people are talking about, how can we get around town on a bike? We need safer routes. We need new routes. We need routes off the streets. And again, Lynn, I think you've generated so much interest and I believe it's been a five year long commitment, quite a long time for you and the volunteers that came along and helped Lynn in our Complete Streets Committee, kind of taking on this challenge. And I'm grateful we're here tonight to talk about it. So I want to share with you what my ears are hearing. And I want you to understand that I think the council's responsibility is to first and foremost use our resources, time, energy, money, skill, labor, all of that, to support the wishes of our community for the community good. We're an unusual community in that there are those of us who live within our small borders and that's where we can dedicate our money to fix roads and sidewalks, et cetera. And then we have all the people who live outside of our area. And tonight I heard that our citizens want to be able to walk or bike to downtown safely. They want to be able to get to the public schools safely. They want to be able to get to the public parks and recreational destinations in town safely. We've also heard that our people in town who have family members going to school outside of town want their children to be able to travel out there safely and on their own. All of those are difficult for us. We've heard that people out in our greater community want to be able to get to town and come here without a car. And they feel it's not safe to come on our major roads. So what I'm thinking in those three areas are part of these ideas. It seems like the council needs to look at priorities, maybe our local street projects need to be calendared or calender sooner so that those people who want to get around town, walking safely and riding bikes safely can do that. That's our council's responsibility. It did occur to me, listening to everybody, in particular when Sue explained, we're a small staff, we don't have a lot of hours and a lot of time, and we have this whole long wish list of, of work, the first priority being our major highways, to put trails there, and then our local streets. And now we have an interest in this city-county outsider, ability to travel outside and into town. The thought was maybe we need to look at a position that is dedicated to this issue. In other words, create a part-time position or assist stewardship jobs, some way where we can bring this, bring an important value and experience that our community wants so that it happens in our lifetime, you know? Not 10 years from now, or five years from now, or 15 years from now. And I thought too, that maybe what we need to do is update our way of looking at bicycle trails in town. You know, and they have that design, I don't know the name for it, but it goes, this pedestrian sidewalk, cyclist on the street, a parked car, and then the moving traffic. So for people who may not want to ride on Pedalova Avenue or Gielzberg Avenue because of the traffic, maybe what we need to do is update how we're thinking of our design. Because the routes are the routes. I mean, this is a small town, we all know how to get around, and we all have our shortcuts. And what I heard in the campaign is we all speed through some neighborhoods of neighborhood and they want us to slow down. So I think we can, we can look at our staffing issues, we can look at our existing map as to our local priorities, and we can update that. And then we need to start a conversation that's about, how does the city coordinate and collaborate with the county so that we get what may be our new lines through county territory on their maps as well? And I think that's a future strategy that we want to develop so that we can actually get our people in our wider community into town and back to where they live safely. And we can get our students who live in town back to their schools safely. So I think there's a lot of public process that we need to address, as Councilmember Glass said, to make sure we have input from all of our citizens and the stakeholders and the property. And I think it was the collaboration that Magic and a number of people also wanted. And I think we might want suggestions from staff as a direction tonight to say, can you, can you give us some specific processes we might look into that have timelines attached to them and have costs attached to them as well? And I think we have a recent helpful example about the Diamond Lumber property where we did have a subcommittee, they did facilitate a community workshop, and we did come up with a work product that was the recruitment brochure for possibilities on that property. That's a very small demonstration of the kind of collaboration I think we can do and the kind of in-house, in community work we can do before we go to great expense and before we go to take the opportunity to get that outsider point of view, which is a professional point of view that could benefit our thinking by their analysis. So as I'm looking at this tonight, I think this is a very worthy subject. It's complicated in those sort of three dimensions that I put it to, but maybe I could think of a fourth dimension. And, and I would like to see tonight that the council can figure out some concrete steps that we can take, we can buy lanes on the street, trails off the street, or high flyers instead of key.
Vice Mayor Sager, Council Leader.
He's on right. Sorry.
First thing I want to say is that pedestrians, people in wheelchairs, people on scooters, people who go to the store on their skateboards, cyclists, everybody, it's not all alternative transportation, it's simply transportation. It's a matter of choice. And, well, hopefully it's a matter of choice, that you do have a choice, that you can use more than two of any of those methods. So the idea that, that alternative transportation is something alternative to a car, well, I like to think the car is the alternative to the more enlightened cycling and walking. So that said, the, the idea that, that I believe it was brought up, that a misperception maybe about what we were doing this evening, and we were not here to approve these two trails in their current form, that's impossible. That would be short sighted, it wouldn't be right, it wouldn't be proper. It completely flies in the face of public process, which is what we need to do. But what these two proposals have done is begin this conversation. It started our community really, really being serious about the things that we say we're serious about. And I think that's a really important thing for us to do. So the, the process and the nuts and bolts of how we move forward, I think that Councilmember Gurney had some good points there about perhaps we create in our, in our upcoming, not very far away budget cycle into potential subcommittee members on the budget. You know, maybe we can look at a half-time position to, to look at things. I don't know, this is the first, I, she just made it up. So the...
[laughter]
And the, the idea that, that we already have longstanding plans of state highways, and that's in design phase, and we have the other of our local streets, and that's a system of sherrows, it's a system of signage, it's, it's a collection of things that make that up. To say that, that these proposals are somehow more important, I'm not here to say that. I don't know where they fit in the priority schedule, but that, that would be something that needs to be reevaluated. I'm not saying these jump to the front of the line, but I'm not sure that they don't. I don't know. So to, to take a look at this in a way that is respectful of individual neighborhoods, who I think we all know, there's a couple in town that are, have issues. And with these trails. And that, that, that those are the kinds of things that we need to study. So I would be in favor of perhaps the, the way to move this forward initially is to impound a council subcommittee that would be charged with looking at these things. We had a couple of committee members who stated an interest in being involved. I think we need to tap into that energy and those willing volunteers. So I, I'm certainly curious to find out, nuts and bolts wise from, from my workers up here about maybe how to move that forward.
I'm more interested in what the Councilmember Eater's is scared like the last time. I've been drawing cartoons of you. The beard got a little tricky, that's what took so long. Question for staff. If a feasibility study were to be commissioned, would that process include public workshops and the gathering of citizens included part of the feasibility study?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You know, it's taken me a really long time to make this shift from calling them bike trails to multi-use trails. I think that's a really important distinction to make. Actually, I watched a video today of Boulder, Colorado, and they have amazingly, in a built-out urban environment, built over 120 miles of multi-use trails throughout town, connect the libraries, city hall, the schools, the churches. They have three lanes. One lane each direction for cyclists and a dedicated lane for everybody else that doesn't want to run over. And so, you know, it's amazing to me, if you see an aerial view of Boulder, Colorado, you go, how the heck do you get trails into this crazy matrix of built-up stuff? But they did it, quite nicely, I might add. So these are multi-use trails. You know, I don't like being prepared notes, but there's just too much to cover, so please bear with me. And change is often difficult. The prospect of bringing change to an environment where we're all settled in is daunting. The task of worse to provide alternative connectors within an established, built urban environment is difficult. There's been a lot of speculation, some accurate, some not so accurate, and it really hasn't been any formal analysis or public outreach performed by the city today. So we're really at a starting point. We are a community and as such, we should strive to do those things that collectively provide the greatest benefit for the largest number of our citizens. Community connector trails are clearly a goal that fits with many of our residents' vision for the basketball. I actually see what we're doing tonight as the foundation for the development of a series of urban trails within our city, linking all of our neighborhoods, allowing tranquil, safe passage away from busy streets. We need to look to the future. In the coming decades, many of us will likely no longer be here. I myself am a cancer patient. I'd like to leave this gift behind. Think about your children, perhaps young now, but eventually adults, perhaps with your grandchildren, being able to realize the benefits provided by our vision and actions today. Do we leave them this enduring legacy? Are we content to settle for an environment primarily suited for those who are dependent through need or through choice upon the automobile? You know, I was really struck today in that video of Boulder, Colorado, the city planner, she said, we're not doing this for us, we're doing this for them. And she turned to a couple of like three-year-old children. And she turned to a couple of like three-year-old children. You know, as a city, we place a high priority on reducing our dependence on the automobile and sought to provide alternatives to it. Some would say that we have done more talking than doing. As referred to earlier by Councilmember Gurney, we did have a subcommittee, and we did get citizen input about the Diamond Lumber yard site. And we produced a promotional brochure to market the site to prospective developer purchasers. In that brochure, it says, "We are a bicycle and pedestrian destination, linking outdoor enthusiasts to both the Laguna de Santa Rosa and the Pacific Ocean." It goes on to say, "The city is in the process of implementing a bike and pedestrian system linking Sebastopol to the Laguna de Santa Rosa and the city of Santa Rosa to the east, and Forestville, Bodega Bay, and the Pacific Ocean to the west." I would say at this point that maybe that's perhaps more wishful thinking, perhaps bordering on false advertising, frankly. Because we're not doing those things. You know, departing from the mayor's observations, I had a preponderance of supportive correspondence that was received, finally. It was pretty telling. I received communications from seniors, to include some in Burbank Heights, who indicated that there was some level of coercion employed by some people to get people to sign petitions. They freely admitted that, but they wouldn't provide their names. They were scared. I got communication from high school students, who we saw here tonight, young children, parents, teachers, and even senior school officials, who said, "These are needed in our community for our schoolchildren, for safe passage." I understand and respect the opposition that's been expressed, and it comes from those that are possibly the most directly affected by this matter. I question if, maybe perhaps, we need to reassess and reprioritize our projects. You know, we've said, "Oh, we've got two already, and now we're going to dump a third on top." You know, I'm wondering, and I can always speak for myself, but the prospect of getting a matching $60,000 grant was a huge carrot for me to jump at for the 116 bicycling, which by the time they're done will cost almost a million dollars. And who knows when that's going to be completed? And when we get done, like one of the speakers tonight said, we'll still have probably the least desirable route in terms of safety once we're done with bike lanes on 116. So I'm beginning to question whether that should be... You know, we're in the process, but that information doesn't go away. So I'm wondering if maybe we need to redirect our focus. There's been some discussion about trying to do this and reduce cost. And this was actually proposed by the Sebastopol Trailmakers to kind of do it locally with volunteers and people who have a lot of experience. But, you know, I don't agree with that. I think we need professional help. We need to get this right. And I don't believe that the necessary expertise exists on a volunteer level in our community at this point. You know, we're not drawing a fixed line on a map, we're finding where to dig tonight. We're simply looking at our options for the creation of broadly defined study areas, much broader than what presented on those graphics you saw earlier tonight, that link specific geographic endpoints. To do that, we must adopt these study areas into the Sebastopol Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. I understand the concerns of the people in the various affected neighborhoods, and I'm not saying you'll be disregarded, and we'll do anything we want, and we'll press ahead regardless. But to torpedo this plan at this point, I think would be very short sighted for the future of our community. You know, we pay a lot of lip service to, we're green, we're environmental, and we're really cool and hip. And then we finish our latte and our car and drive home. And I think it's time for a sea change in the way we think about things, in the way we look at the world. You know, the teacher said before, basically, "Don't try to con high school students." You know, they'll see what, they'll see right through you. And I think that's kind of in many aspects. Sebastopol's attitude towards making the really hard, difficult, and expensive decisions that are really going to change the way we relate to our environment. And this is one aspect of that. And there's many others we'll have to deal with over time. You know, we may not have all the answers here, but you know, if we don't ask the question, we won't have any of the answers. That's the way I see things. You know, with that, I'm ready to make a motion. I would move that the city council direct staff to establish study zones connecting the following geographic points. The Joe Radoa Trailhead on Petaluma Avenue and the Valley View neighborhood to the west. The Joe Radoa Trailhead on Petaluma Avenue and Lynch Road to the south. And it really needs to be clearly understood. The purpose of these study zones is just to analyze the feasibility of creating multi-use trails within the zones. Not to bulldoze through the farm, not to run over people in Burbank Heights. It's not to impinge on Eleanor Street. It's to look at what are our options? Do we need to swing wide? Do we need to go somewhere else? If we don't make that move, we've gone nowhere. Secondly, I would move that the city council directs staff to return to the council with a resolution incorporating a CEQA and budgeting analysis, amending the Sebastopol Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan to incorporate these study zones into the master plan to allow further further consideration. And finally, I would move that we direct staff to prepare an RFP for the professional preparation of a feasibility study to include citizen input, citizen workshops. For the identified study zones, to include identifying funding sources and the development of a tentative timeline for the issuance of the RFP. Thank you.
Second motion, if, did you intend to say that they were class one bike lanes? Or just bike lanes?
They are class one multi-use trails.
Great, perfect. I'll second that for discussion.
I'd like to understand what these zones have to do with the proposed alignments that were presented earlier this evening.
I would say that they would be a broad swath of area that connected those geographic points. The trailhead in both cases and the Valley View neighborhood to the west and going south toward Lynch Road. So in lieu of a defined line on a map, we're saying, these are the, this is where we want to start in Sebastopol. And this is where we want to get, how can we feasibly do that in the least painful, less, least expensive, least controversial, you know, on a lot of, a lot of levels of mammalism? And with citizen input.
Okay, well, to address some of the things that you've just mentioned and your remarks, it does seem like you have a lot of controversy right now. And why I was proposing that we back up and get a little bit more for more process for a resolution of these concerns prior to spending a lot of money on professionals. That's, that's, you know, I think that that's a good place to start rather than spending a lot of money on professionals while we're just discussing their issues. I think having a process to get a better idea of alternatives and issues before spending a lot of money on studying is, is a more financially feasible way to go. And I'm not saying that that should all be done by, by 100% volunteers. I'm saying perhaps some facilitated, facilitated public workshops to address some of these issues so that there is a record of that information going into what's a more expensive process. And I think one of the reasons why we need to do that is that there's so many people in this room right now, or people who came here this evening that were concerned and saying, "Well, I just heard about this," and they're really nervous. And they're feeling like this, this just happened so fast that they're kind of, because there wasn't notice, there wasn't public notice about something in a particular area. So I hear what you're saying about, okay, not a, not a specific alignment. But I'm wondering if we need more of a forum for some public input that goes to staff before we move forward with the processes that you enumerated in your remarks. Because we have so often moved really quickly, and we've heard people say this evening, "Take your time, take your time, take your time." And I don't want to take our time to the point where we never do anything. And, but we have also hastily made decisions sometimes where all the public input wasn't really considered before we move forward with an RFP and with a proposal. So I think, and when we do that, and we don't build consensus from the community, I think we can build consensus in the community around what it is you want to see. And I think we can build consensus in the community around multi-use trails that are safe for people to use and getting off streets and all these things that you've been talking about. But are we going to jump into that immediately without some more community input? I'm not sure. You know, with the concerns I've heard today, that's what we set ourselves up for, going into a process with a lot of controversy and lack of community consensus. Then we end up with lawsuits and everybody's mad, and everybody gets mad at each other. And I think if we do just, you know, it doesn't have to take a year, but just a little more community input to figure out, to direct staff on other steps in this process.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. So I really like Councilmember Eater's idea of a sea change. I think that's really important. And we've heard from our public, especially during the campaign, that people are frustrated because we don't have anything on the street. We don't have, you know, those lines on the asphalt. I am uncomfortable with three motions rolled into one package. And so I'll tell you why I'm interested in these concerns tonight. There were issues of notice that we heard. There were issues of people wanting an opportunity to contribute to the results. And they didn't have that chance. And my concern is that we are looking at kind of one, one choice and one choice only, even if it's a wider stripe on the map. And we haven't had the opportunity, or the public hasn't had the opportunity to say, "Well, I have another idea, or I think of a better idea here, or we could do this instead of that." And we've heard the need for that tonight from some neighborhoods and the farm as well. I recall our work on the Northeast Area Plan. And the consultant, you know, ran with it and gave us three choices that the councilman was compelled to select from. And what we realized, and I think what the public said was, "Geez, you never gave us choice number four. You never gave us the choice that happened to be at that time that no project alternative." And so I think it's important to hold that in our minds and realize it may be short sighted to move forward with one examination, one route in each direction, publicly vetted through complete streets without notice to property owners or stakeholders, so that tonight we have people who are going, "I didn't know about this." And the kind of tragic part of that is, people in our community who do support bicycle and pedestrian travel, transit, and recreation are now emotionalized in talking against something we all know we want. And so that's why I think it's important to take our time and keep our moving forward something that is more conceptual. So for instance, if we were going to establish a study zone, is this the first motion that Councilmember Eater mentioned? I think it's really important that the direction there is to look for, well, it's east, west, and north, south, to look for all the possibilities. Not, not limit ourselves to this work that is kind of our kickstart on it. And so for me to go on with directing staff and doing the CEQA analysis and preparing the RFP, I just can't stack up all those processes as a decision in one night. Because I believe we, we want as a community to understand what we might do that could be part of that great sea change and get it on the ground sooner rather than later. Especially if we could look at our budget and potentially increase our staff time, because this happens to be a value of priority in our community, in our greater community as well. So I'm, I'm looking at a more limited discussion than the three points to the motion. That's just got more rolled into it than I am willing to talk about at once.
Are we ready to move on to the rest of the document? Well, we're here for discussion. I would say that I did not make three motions. I made a motion that was a three-part motion. No one single part of that motion can stand on itself alone. They're all interdependent, so it was one motion. And frankly, it was one of the alternatives, I think it was alternative three or four in the staff report, frankly, along, you know. See what I'm saying? Anyway, so anyway, in terms of controversy, controversy is good. But I think we need to remember that the city really has not been involved in an official capacity. So we haven't created a controversial circumstance here. We haven't done this. Now is the time for the outreach to struggle. Citizen input to be garnered. I think we need professional facilitation here. I mean, if that weren't the case, why don't we do a volunteer general plan update and save all the money? We don't do it. It's, I think a project of this magnitude is beyond capabilities of, even the people in this complete streets community who offered to try to do some of this work to save money, I don't think it's feasible. And, you know, I think we just need to take the first step here. And I'm afraid the further we put this off, the more likely it will be that this city council eventually winds up turning its back on the creation of multi-use trails and stuff.
I don't think there's any chance that the city council's going to turn its back on multi-use trails. I'm sorry. But I think that the step that we're asking people to take back is, you know, is there the potential that the step that we take tonight is making it clear that we intend for there to be a north, south, east, west, multi-use trail connector to the Joe Radoa Trail, and that we want to see a subcommittee convene to understand that's going to happen. And that we want to see a subcommittee convene to understand how that's going to happen, sort of similar to the tractor property. And then we expect the subcommittee and staff come back with a plan and budget line item for the 2015-16 budget process, which will finalize in six months from now. Which is at an appropriate time for us to do some local studies, to reach out to a local subcommittee, and reach out to the staff to discuss the issue and come back to us with a clear plan, budgeted, for us to move forward in a process that's efficient. So I don't know if that's a happy medium for the types of things I've heard Councilwoman Burney say. And like, I second with you. I mean, that might be a place where the council could come to some consensus. You don't love that idea?
I'm curious what plan a subcommittee of any two of us who aren't, don't possess any expertise in these fields, this field, and city staff would come up with that would push this project forward, one. And two, to include these in the, to adopt these into the master plan is only essentially saying, "We're willing to study them." That's all we're saying. And then it will take some length of time. And I would ask staff, I mean, even if we were to say tonight, "Let's move forward on this." An RFP would take an approximate length of time to prepare and to issue and to give back and review. I'm sorry, excuse me, a request for proposals. You know, with the holiday season, I mean, we're probably talking six months, I would think, at least, if not more. So it's not like we're going to work on this tomorrow. But my fear is, is that we will talk about this and we will have a subcommittee. And six or eight months from now, we'll be talking about, "Now, what do we want to do?" And I don't think we need to, I don't know what we gain. I'm in favor of a subcommittee. I would volunteer to be on. But I don't have the expertise to work even with city staff and go, "This is where we should look at, these are the things that have issues." That's for the expert.
None of us, we, you and I are a Formula Business Organized Subcommittee. Neither one of us are professionals on Formula Business Organizations. We work with staff, we get language, we develop it, we learn about it together, and we become leaders in our community on the issue. That's what we do as councilmembers. So I'm hearing a sense of urgency and speed, but I fear that's the exact mistake we made tonight, was this sense of urgency and speed that didn't slow down enough to take all of the issues into account. So I'm all about things fast. I don't think anything could happen faster than the 2015-16 budget cycle. I know, I've been on the budget subcommittee for the last two years. And to try to usher things through faster and we can budget things through the standard process is problematic. So I'm trying to find a process that aligns us with that. So we can have something that's decently thought out, even well thought out, by that budget process so we can actually be prepared to dedicate funds appropriately to move the project forward. Because at the end of the day, nothing moves forward without money. And until, and you know, we talked about measure R, our citizens' past measure R. One of the things we talked about with bike lanes. That's one of the things that we should be dedicated to doing in this next budget cycle. We should be able to align this process with that budget cycle to make it successful. Is really where I'm trying to help this continue.
I think what's being possibly mistaken for my request for speed is my request to put this matter down on paper so that we may begin the process to start to gain public input, start the public process and and start getting the process going where we know what our citizens think of it. That's all I'm asking.
Mary, can you reiterate the motion if you have anything left on the table?
And it'd be helpful if you could do it in the three parts, if you could.
I think our long process that we're going to do. Councilmember Eater, we're going to direct staff to establish studies zones in the Joe Redotta Trail, have it pedal in the avenue, to value the for what's Joe Redotta Trail, pedal in the avenue to link roads up to town. To direct staff to return to council with the resolution incorporating DCA, SEQA, embedded analysis, amending the master plan and incorporating these trails into the master plan. And directing staff to prepare a request for proposals for proper professional preparation of a feasibility study, identify steady zones to include funding sources in a timeline for issuance of the RFP. And it's not word for word, but those are the three.
That's it. Let's do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, class one.
And can you do that last part? Prepare an RFP where it starts there.
Directed, to direct staff to prepare an RFP for the professional preparation of a feasibility study when they identified steady zones to include funding sources in timeline for issuance of the RFP.
So that was missing from the trail north. Could it still have a connection process from the center to the north? That is a connection breakage. I didn't hear, so I'm hearing from the trail west. And I heard from the trail south. And I don't see a study zone for the trail north.
That's because all proposals started the Joe Redotta Trail and Pedal in the Avenue.
So how do you get from the Joe Redotta Trail north? Isn't there, we don't have a
Or just take a connector in Morris Street and go behind the high school and up the old railroad.
There's a bike trail on Morris Street? Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Seriously?
I'm willing to amend my motion to add another study area and be by.
It's 10:30, please.
No, we're going to do a study session just for you.
So there's no painted bike lanes on Morris Street?
Right.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not crazy.
There are signs.
Oh, those are safe bike lanes.
Okay, so but that's already planned and studied?
Yes.
And happening, okay.
Well, I have a comment. If this is all wrapped together, all these three parts, what I'm hearing you say is that we're going to adopt a change, an amendment to our master plan through this motion tonight. And individually, I'm not willing to do that much that fast. That's why I suggested maybe we take it, you know, one part of this at a time. Because I don't think there's been enough workup on the choices we may have to get these trails on the ground.
That's the vision.
Thanks, I'm good at vision, I think. And I want that vision, but I don't want the vision to be limited where it's been made myopic to one proposal only. I think that's very problematic for this community. And I think we saw those problems tonight.
That's why I suggested a feasibility study.
That's what a feasibility study is.
You guys, if we could please have everyone not bursting out, it would be really helpful. Thank you. I tend to agree with Councilwoman Burney, Dawn. I think that if you're where you're at, then we can call a question. I think we're there. And if somebody has something they think is necessary to add to the discussion?
I think this is really necessary for me to say. There are feasibility studies that do one thing, or there are feasibility studies that come up with three or four choices. I mean, you give the direction to what the feasibility study is going to do.
Yes, please, Councilwoman Baskin.
I just wanted to reiterate that, first of all, I probably support, you know, 80 to 90% of what was in the trail presentation already. I mean, I, and I support absolutely our town's commitment to having class one trails, to getting everybody off, out of their automobiles, into other forms of transportation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, but what I heard tonight was a room full of a lot of controversy. And I, my, one of my concerns is that if we just do this, you know, adopt, like move forward, adopt this, do this, do this, do this, that all the people that left early today are not going to get the full message. So, you know, we may be, you know, we're talking about study zones. We're talking about a bigger swath, et cetera, et cetera. But you know what things are like in this small town? You know, everybody's going, "Oh, no, the council adopted the blah, blah, blah tonight." And everybody's going to be like, "Man." So, you know, we may be thinking here, up here at the Dads, we're saying we're doing something a little bit different than just putting a, yes, this good housekeeping seal approval on the entire plan that Complete Streets has put forward. And we're talking about studying something a little different. But I think we need to do some more community outreach to get people a little, you know, a little more settled down and where people aren't, where this isn't going to get some kind of urban myth going, where, you know, we're going to build a freeway through on Bannon Street. And next thing, everyone's going to have 40 mile an hour electric bikes. So we don't have things to get out of proportion. About communicating with the public and getting more consensus with the community so they understand we're moving forward with this with the concerns that we heard here tonight. And we're doing it in a positive way and that we're doing it in a in a fast track way that is going to be fast enough to actually get the job done, but not so fast that we don't communicate with the public.
The final comment I would make, and it's fine, is what is the difference in the net result that we get from putting this into the master plan and studying it? When do we do it? With homegrown facilitation? We do it, which I believe is the better alternative, with professional facilitation? Or if we just talk about it for a while and then decide to move forward with it? Is there a significant difference? I don't think that incorporating it into the master plan, such as the stone, or creates any problem with the same process that we would do if we were just asking people what they thought. Because that's the process of a feasibility.
Okay, I think we've debated this enough, I'm going to call a question. All in favor? All opposed? Well, wait, I'm sorry. I'm in favor, yes. I'm supporting my own motion, yes, certainly. All opposed? Any exceptions? Okay, motion fails. Is there another motion?
I move that we direct staff to return with an outline of a public process and budget to consider amendments to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan as regards to an east-west and north-south route concept, including any need for initial professional consultant assistance and SEQA analysis.
I'll play the microphone for discussion.
I think it needs to be clear if you are referring to these routes when you say north, south, east, west? Or if that's a general direction we want to go from which we might have three different routes? So I don't know what you mean, that's why I'm asking.
Well, this gets into the, I like the idea of the study areas. And the descriptions, forgive me, it's 10:30 and I'm a little under the weather, so. Basically, it's from the existing trailhead on Pedaluma Avenue going west and going south. So it's akin to the study areas that were already defined in the prior motion.
So you have two minutes?
I know. I already apologized for being under the weather.
So I, so can we, we want the studies to be those zones using what's been proposed tonight as a starting point?
I think what we, that what was proposed tonight has begun this entire community conversation. I don't know a way to define it other than what I just did. We start at the trailhead, going to the south end of town. Start at the trailhead and you go west. And I'm not sure how we adopt or study routes that are not within our city limits. That was a question that was raised much earlier this evening. And our city attorney wasn't exactly clear on whether or not we could do that. Did I hear that correctly?
He can be very, I'm very
If you're on the concept level for study zones, so you're, it's clear you're studying them. Most of that study can include areas not within our geographical territory.
Okay.
Let's leave my answer there. Councilwoman Burney, you're right.
So the the outline of the public process, I think that that's an incredibly valuable thing to have. It is, I believe, a valuable first step following this hearing tonight. And it moves us, I think that that's the missing piece in the puzzle between the initial motion and I think, at least where my comfort level is, that we do that. And so to have an outline of what that would look like with potential meeting dates, we have worked with our outreach coordinator and figured out a way to publicize these things so that the community is well notified. And I think that a preliminary budget makes good sense. I don't believe it would be difficult to make a few phone calls to professional firms because I am in complete agreement with Councilmember Eater. This is beyond us on a local level to produce the type of document as far as a feasibility study. But I want a little bit more information before we go to that next step. So I think all this is doing is creating a bridge between ground zero tonight and the initial motion. I don't think that the the items with the SEQA documents, which is an evaluation, I'll explain that just a little bit. That's an evaluation done by the planning department that that looks at environmental issues. And it results in either something called a negative declaration, which means any potential environmental effects can be mitigated, or there are things that are so great that it moves to a full environmental impact report. We don't want to go there. So the, that's what the environmental work in the SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, that's what that means. And then I think the RFP, rather than create the RFP, we at least get a ballpark figure for what that work might look like, cost price.
Ready to call a question?
Oh, yes.
Well, I think, is there any discussion on this one? I think that's important rather than to just jump to the vote. So I'm still unclear if your motion is about class one trails only and you wouldn't accept on our streets, trails on our streets.
I think I would suggest that it be, that class one be our first choice when class one routes are available, to make them our first choice. And sometimes we'll have to drop to a class two or class three route because that's what is feasible. That we should make class one our priority for this study because we already have other classified routes established.
Well, we have them established and we could potentially use some of those for a route. I'm thinking, well, either way, south or west. Because we might get to some of those routes that are on our local streets and actually of those routes that are on our local streets and actually help our population move around to schools and internally in town.
Yeah, I still, I think that a bike route on one Pedaluma Avenue is completely different than a bike route that is separate from traffic. I did like your idea of it being separated by parked vehicles. Does that make it a class one bike route? A class one bike lane when it's separated by vehicles? Yeah, by parked vehicles?
That's why, I mean, so we say the outline, we're limiting ourselves to that.
There wasn't, you definitely didn't say class one in this motion. You read number two from the staff alternative, actually, so it's in writing.
Well, there actually changes to that, so shall we read the motion back?
I was just going to ask, hi, first lady, who'd clarify his motion.
I would like to add, do you want me to start from the start? Direct staff, I move that we direct staff to return with an outline of a public process and a preliminary budget to consider amendments to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan in regards to an east-west and north-south route concept, starting at the Joe-Rodada Trailhead on Pedaluma Avenue and going southward and going westward. And to include any need for initial professional consultant assistance and sequel analysis, and the preference to these route studies would be class one whenever possible and other classes when class one is not feasible.
Would you be willing to add to, that the staff will bring that back to the council so they could consider the project in context of upcoming 2015-16 city budget?
Yes, consider that added.
I will support that change to the majority.
Isn't this fine?
Yes.
We have the rest of our agenda. So I would like, if I may, to ask staff, kind of, if this motion succeeds, what would be a reasonable timeline for this to return to? Because I think we had important comments that we don't slow down too much, you know, and make this, kick this over to the next November's.
Well, I think the motion said it has to be done in the ready's for us to consider for the 15-16 city budget, which would put us in April.
Well, budgets meeting start, the schedule comes out in January, they can start late February, March, April, comes back to the council May, June. And we know that if it comes back, it may need to come back more than once, just, that's our nature, I guess.
Yeah, I think where we are in the calendar of the holiday season, coming back in maybe February or so, it might be relatively realistic. And then, yeah, it may come back on a primary basis for council feedback on, here's an outline, here's some ideas, or maybe an alternative, so on how to proceed, and get feedback from the council, and then fund that up and put it into the official city as a project for the coming fiscal year. I think I said one end of the set.
Okay, are you guys ready to call a question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any questions? Wait, pass this by now.